Any questions, discussion on the agenda?
Moved that we approve the agenda for tonight?
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. We have no items on our consent agenda tonight, so we won't be voting on that. Our agenda tonight consists of two work session items. There are no administrative or legislative items, so there are no votes that I know of to be taken tonight. Just a discussion, couple of presentations from staff on the sixteen hundred South Corridor Plan and the reframing downtown plans. Will those both be by you Director Yost?
Yeah, those were... I think I'm gonna just switch number two because I meant that to be the active transportation plan. I probably didn't communicate that correctly for the agenda.
That makes more sense to why you gave us the active transportation.
Yeah, you've all kind of... There's not a whole lot to update on the second, on the reframing downtown plan, but I can get into that.
Then that should be quick.
First, I think we should welcome our new planning commission member.
Would you like to introduce yourself, say a few things?
Sure. I'm just kidding.
About forty-five minutes.
Anne Anderson. Lived here in Springville for the past thirty-five years-ish and have retired from Nevo School District and just looking for more fun things to do. So this is a great opportunity and I'm looking forward to working with you.
You definitely found the fun place. This is where all the fun things happen.
I've known Anne for a lot of years and she will be a great, great addition to the planning commission. Personally, I'm very grateful and glad to have her here.
I second that.
All in favor? Yeah, well, welcome. It's nice to meet you and we'll look forward to getting to know you better. I'm Karen Ellingson and...
Genevieve Baker.
I guess you already know.
But you probably know one of my close friends, Carl Nielsen.
By the way, Anne was also principal at Springville High School and principal at Salem Hills High School.
She opened up Salem Hills.
Uh-huh. So she's had a lot of experience here.
In the district as the secondary education...
Director.
Director.
And the HR director.
And the HR director.
What was your most recent job?
Director of Secondary at Nevo School District.
Okay.
Well, then angry people shouldn't face you.
Hey, bring it.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're grateful to have Anne on the commission and for her willingness to serve and... Or an ability to say no. I don't know what it is, but either way.
And Josh, nice haircut.
Thank you.
It looks very even.
It was late this year, but it happened. Well, actually, just to, as my opening, soften the mood before we get into these very lighthearted planning concepts. The reason you hadn't seen the typical summer do is because when Mayor Packard was elected last year and he called and talked and, you know, "What can I do for you? How can I help you?" And I said, "Well, what can I, you know, what ways can I help you? What do you need from me?" And he said, "When it comes to the summer, don't shave your head." And I said, "Okay." And he said, "All right, I'll talk to you later," and hung up. And so about May, I was getting hot and was in a meeting with him and just asked him and said, "I just wanted to check in on that because I wanted, you know, be respectful of what you asked me." He's like, "Oh, I was just, I was just giving you a hard time. I was just pulling your leg."
That's very good of you.
So and I had just scheduled a haircut for that day, so I thought I'd get my money out of that one before I... So, yes, Mayor Packard's very sly sense of humor caught me off guard and I... Yeah.
And here's the result.
And here's the result, finally. So, for everyone, we've been engaged in a plan, a sixteen hundred South Corridor Plan or area plan for the past year about. This plan or this map shows you the outline of the area and it's kind of broken into two. The first is this area right along the corridor which we use and it actually extends down to this area that's noted as future annexation, the former Santana Raceway, which will be annexed last week. And this scenario area had a different level of study or different purpose of study. And then the whole area down to the southern boundary of the city and then up into the Dry Creek area, there's not a lot of decisions to be made in these areas outside of this immediate corridor area. So the first effort we embarked on was the scenario planning effort. And that's a very detailed plan that is less about determining a final outcome than about providing you data about the results of different scenarios or different options. So what we did is we took that area and applied a number of different scenarios or land use scenarios to it, ranging from, you know, all commercial to all residential and different scenarios between that to analyze the economic productivity, the infrastructure impacts, the utility impacts, all those things. And we specifically looked at land use density, job retention, job growth, and the, what I would call the fiscal impact to the city in terms of economic benefit and infrastructure demand. So we kind of look at fiscal impact in terms of how much does this area produce in revenue to the city and what is its demand for services and is that a productive relationship? So we went through the scenario plan and, working with the city council and the internal staff, settled on a program or a mix in the preferred scenario. Then what we did is we went and took that scenario and what we have for you tonight is the result of putting the scenario, taking the general ideas and program that was identified or mix that was identified in the scenario and applying it to the whole area through what's called a regulating plan. And the regulating plan is essentially what you've seen in, on the Lakeside Landing Special District overlay. So it's a plan that established the location of the roads, the location of the zones and parks and open spaces. Like I've rec, I think, referred to it as a superpowered zoning map that doesn't just say what the zones are, but it regulates all the, or a lot of the other elements of the build environment.
Josh, who helped put that all together?
So the, oh yeah, the team that we retained for this plan is led by CRSA, an architecture and planning firm out of Salt Lake, with sub consultants from Downtown Redevelopment Services, which is a local economic analysis and planning firm. And then transportation's been handled by Avenue Consultants, which is the firm that did the environmental study on the sixteen hundred South Corridor for UDOT. So they had that in and familiarity with that interchange and road reconstruction project.
And who from the city?
From the city, we've had from community development, myself and Laura Thompson from engineering, Brad Stapley and Jeff Anderson, primarily Jeff Anderson, John Penrod. Troy Fitzdrill has been heavily involved. And then we've involved, at some degree, all the superintendents from the different utility sides, as well as Bradley Neal and then Stacy Child are building the grounds and now Parks and Rec Director. And then we've looped in with general meetings, all of the other directors to keep them up to date on what we've been, on the progress we've been making.
Sounds like a good group.
I hope, I hope it, I think it is and I hope it'll bear out well. So, these are some heavy tables and I don't expect you to go through these in this meeting, but what I want you to understand or what I want to convey is that the scenario plan gave us numbers in all these categories. And as you look at some of these numbers, you may think, "Oh, this is, seems pretty skewed to one," especially in like housing by type. You see that the housing units in the medium-high density are much higher than the medium-low. Well, that's just because we're looking at the category, the strip right along the road with these numbers. When we apply it to the whole area, the numbers basically turn over and we'll show you that regulating plan map as we get to it. So we've analyzed this and have an understanding of how it will, how the preferred development scenario will impact our utility capacity and all of our kind of public service capacity. And I'll forward, I'll send this to you. Did we send this out? I don't know if you've got a copy of this beforehand. We'll send this out after for you to continue to review. We also looked at, you know, the walkability score and tax revenue, as I talked about before. And just in that corridor, the scenario we looked at has a substantial improvement in really the ability of people to walk to their daily needs, like access to retail within a ten-minute walk, which is even substantially shorter drive. Didn't really change our, you know, ability to walk to parks because it's reasonably good within the corridor already for those people that are actually living there and will keep that same level of service for parks as we extend the residential development in that area. So this is the real meat of the presentation. This is the site regulating plan. The dark area or the darkest green-blue is a housing, the most dense housing, the medium-high, which is below what the, the most dense areas at Lakeside, but comparable to the kind of mid-range of the Village Center Zone or some of the other multifamily developed along the four hundred South Corridor. And then the lighter colors, the orange and the yellow or brown and the yellow are the rest of the commercial, are the rest of the residential colors. You can see that really the majority of the residential in the area is single-family detached residential, but then tapering up to the small area along the corridor where there is multifamily along the corridor. We have been balancing a number of interests between a lot of members of the city council, I think primarily because it's what we're used to and what we've seen, especially in our local area. Their interest in creating essentially a commercial strip for the distance of the corridor and our interest on the planning team of focusing that development more into nodes to create places and to create economies of scale and, what's the word I'm looking for? When you get enough stuff together that it actually, something happens. Instead of looking at it more of like an Orem State Street, looking at it more as a series of discreet places that you can travel between. And that once you get to one of them, if you're in a car, you can park once and shop at multiple outlets instead of having, get back in your car and driving another quarter mile down the strip. So that's been a balancing act that we've been going back and forth on. And actually, in this last iteration, we pulled some of the commercial out of these nodes and pushed it back up against the corridor to address what the city council had asked us to do. And in terms of commercial, the darker purple color is essentially, I guess you think of it as like Canyon Creek commercial, big boxes, more suburban oriented commercial. And the village mixed commercial is more pedestrian oriented.
Small, independent.
Well, not necessarily small, independent. I mean, kind of the places I've seen a lot of Carhartt stores in. I mean, I do, my closest store that I know of in Murray is in kind of the hybrid of that. It's kind of a, if it's still there, on Winchester. It's not in the mall and it's not in the giant retail strip. It's in kind of a cute little center.
But, but we're talking a smaller footprint.
Smaller footprint generally.
And restaurants and that type.
Yes, more of a Riverwoods than a Canyon Creek. And then this mixed lifestyle area here is really pushing towards going beyond what you might see at the Riverwoods. The Riverwoods really doesn't integrate vertically many of its uses. It's really horizontally dispersed. You know, you've got to take your golf cart from Qualtrics to come down for lunch and, or brave the street to get there from the new housing to the south. This is more what you might see if you're familiar with Sugar House in Salt Lake or what we've envisioned for the Lakeside Landing project, that it's really a vertical mixed-use center in that southern part of the neighborhood. And then we'll make a plan for all of the road connections, including bringing twelve hundred west, realigning it from the existing Canyon Creek where it comes to Wallace Drive and creating a new roadway that will tee into the existing one and then, or the existing roadway will tee into the Canyon Creek or twelve hundred west and meet the existing twelve hundred west at sixteen hundred south where the Tintic line crosses.
So the white dot, that's where you currently can turn left and kind of meander through?
Yes.
The fields a little bit, just that tiny?
Yep, hop over the railroad track, correct.
Sixteen hundred.
It's, it's really, I mean sixteen, it's almost sixteen, yeah.
Is that gonna, is that gonna remain?
It will remain barely. The rail, the proposed bridge over the UP line here makes it down just before that. So that does remain, but the primary intersection, the first big intersection you'll come to is that twelve hundred west intersection because that really is where our continuous arterial street is as opposed to coming up into Devon Glen or not Devon Glen into...
One of those railways is gonna go away, right?
So this, and you can see it with this green dotted line, this is the Tintic line. That's part of the package that UTA bought in their rail, in their rail acquisition twenty years ago when they purchased a lot of this right-of-way. This is the line that will take them down to Payson. The line they get, they are on in Provo is the Sharp Line or the main UP line. And so they'll come down the east side of the existing UP line or the western line in Springville. And then this will take off somewhere here in Kelvin Grove Park. That's what it is. I was confused. Devon Glen, Kelvin Grove. And they, and that line will split and come over and connect to the Tintic line here so that they can transition between the two lines. And then everything upstream from that realigned connection, north all the way to four hundred south where the Tintic line comes off of the Provo subdivision will be taken out of service. We don't have a clear picture yet what taken out of service means, whether that ride will be retained, whether it will be available for purchase. But the anticipated long-term plan for that is always for it to be, go essentially through a rails-to-trails process where the rail is removed, but the right-of-way stays and is converted to trail use.
And the railroad folks would need to give approval for that change to occur?
Yes. The nice thing is that section is owned by UTA, so it's not a Union Pacific issue which is orders of magnitude more drawn out and difficult. The quests, the questions are whether they retain that and whether they retain the right to reinstate usage of that line in the future. A lot of times rails-to-trails has the potential where rail service could be reinstated at some future point. I don't know that's ever happened because the rail network is consolidated. But we're looking for additional guidance on how that comes out, how we deal with crossings, all of those type of things. But it is the general plan that that will be a rail, a trail connection bringing us all the way from four hundred south down into the southern edge of the city and down into the Dry Creek area, Parkway and onto twelve hundred west, Greenway.
For the, the two rails that are gonna be consolidated to the east?
Oh, over here?
Yeah, over there. Is that, is the western one going to be just retired? Or is it going to go away because it's being consolidated to the east?
That's another question we don't have the answer to. We know Spanish Fork and we know us that we both want to be able to control or have, say, over the use of that right-of-way, whether that's through, by, in trail use or other use. But would, it provides a really good active transportation connection if we're able to get a hold of it. And it also paves the way for a lot of better connection through this area, especially this connection south of the Evergreen Cemetery in this neighborhood that I always get the name wrong. Okay?
It would be called Sunrise Ridge.
Okay, because Sunrise Ranch is the one in Mapleton, correct?
I happen to know that just off the...
That hence, hence I deferred to the person who may have...
For some small reason, I don't know why.
So Sunrise Ridge. But that's, that's what the plan is there, but we don't know the exact disposition of the left, the remaining rail.
But the railway that is probably gonna end up going away is gonna be this one on the left.
Yes, the west goes to the east.
And is that the one, that's the one that goes over the bridge by Florence's, right? Is that, is that the one?
Well, I mean, they...
That would be up by sixteen south. Sixteen hundreds.
The one that borders Evergreen Cemetery, isn't it?
No, 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 no.
No.
Or is it the lower one?
It would be the lower one.
The lower one?
Because the one that...
It's the lower one, yeah.
It would be the lower one that would then, yeah, that would be the...
One behind Cal's house.
The...
That's the lower one.
It's west of Lynn's.
No.
Should we pull up a map?
West of Lynn's is the lower one.
Yeah. It's just, it's just east of like south.
Florence's is the most furthest east.
East.
And it has the bridge. That has the small bridge that...
Right.
That's the one that's staying.
Many people have lost their campers under.
So, but that one's gonna stay in operation, is that correct?
Yeah, because it's gonna be consolidated and it's gonna be two rails instead of just the one.
It'll be the one down below by Crandall's.
Will move over.
It's gonna move over and that one's gonna be abandoned. Not necessarily abandoned, but hopefully.
You already have fiber. That loaded way faster than last time.
The computer's better.
Okay.
And yes, we already have fiber. We've had fiber.
There we go.
Always have fiber. So they, it will be consolidated from this point. It won't flare out. It will stay consolidated. So this, there will only be one crossing here.
And that's also the point where the Tintic line will...
The Tintic line comes off right here.
Yeah.
That's gonna be the one right just east of Lynn's house.
Yeah, just, just west of Marlin Boyer's, that goes to the east.
So will they abandon, well, you said you didn't know.
We don't know. It will be taken out of rail service.
If it is taken out of rail service and abandoned?
I doubt it would be abandoned, but that's the, that's the least likely outcome, at least in my experience.
Would it go from a rail-to-trail situation?
Yeah, that's, I think that's pretty likely.
And that's what we want.
That would be a good outcome. I just don't see...
But how are we gonna connect all these? If they do, is there gonna be a connection amongst these trails that will all eventually hook up?
Yes, I have a map for you.
Will we talk about that in, we'll talk about it in the transportation?
Yes.
Well, I kind of breezed through it.
Yeah.
So there is...
The scary thing would be the quiz before.
Can I ask you a couple more questions or is it too early to ask questions?
That's why we're here.
In, in looking, as you get off the freeway exit, we've got all the commercial in purple on both sides, dark and light.
Yes.
And then it's gonna transition from, from those into, you've got the, the major, that residential on the left with all those condos and townhomes and all that kind of stuff down there on the left. And then just past the purple, the commercial, there's a little section of residential. Is there a reason why we've got that little residential section in there?
You're gonna have to, so, this section here?
No, go down left. Keep going, keep, yeah, right there, that little one.
I don't know that they've identified that correctly. I had that same question. That is the area between the, kind of the subdivision property. Oh, no, that...
Is that?
That's...
Where's the bridge going to be?
That's...
Is that the power, the power station, the substation?
No, the substation is over here. But this is the portion south of Spring Creek across from, see, and I just said it and now I can't remember. Kelvin Grove Park. And so I don't think they quite have that identified right. And there's gonna be a little bit of a take there with this rail realignment. So we're not sure how much of this property...
Is it maybe somebody submitted some application or something and that's why it was identified?
No, I hadn't noticed.
It would seem like that commercial would be better. And then we don't own the property to the south, correct?
This is...
That's Spanish Fork.
Correct. So this area here, basically to this little line I'm drawing on, this is all Spanish Fork. This area owned by the Williams and the Schwartz families is unincorporated.
Where will the railroad bridge be?
Here. And basically right where the...
Are we gonna use access to those businesses or?
Yeah, what is the?
Yeah, how are we gonna get access to those?
So they will, we will have access through the project. So the seventeen fifty west will, they'll take a road through here and then up, up the frontage road because they have to get rid of the frontage road. So you'll come up seventeen fifty west from a signal here. And then I could even, let me just bring up that.
So the frontage road will go away or the access to the frontage road?
Yes, the current frontage road will go away. So, let me see if I can just pull up that map quickly. Yeah, it's not the greatest one, but it's kind of shows you what's going on. So down here where Nickelcade and the spa...
Spa and everything.
That building goes.
So that building will be torn down?
Yeah, the, the on-ramp impacts that building. And the frontage road along sixteen hundred south and in this area will be removed. The road will come south of Barlow's and then turn east and connect to seventeen fifty.
Okay.
And then there will be this existing connection at the top, but we anticipate there will be an additional connection through here. Right now, we're pushing for, especially because this railroad bridge flares to the south to avoid property takes here, it does not sit on top of our existing road. So we're pushing them to leave the road so we can have access essentially from east to west, north of the Viaduct structure at the current Atgrade Crossing. But we anticipate at some point that would probably go away as we kind of exchange crossings and clean stuff up. And then access will be provided into here from seventeen fifty.
Is that more of a UDOT issue?
Yeah, it's entire, I mean, it's a UDOT city. This is all a amalgam UDOT city issue because right now it's our road and it's still our road. And unless they build it and then the legislature essentially acts, it would stay our road. So there's been a lot of discussion about whose road this is and who ends up with this very expensive and long railroad bridge. So it's been a lot of discussion around that. So it's a pretty complex issue involving the railroad, UP, UTA, UDOT and Spanish in Springville.
Again, the purpose, the reason I brought that up is it seems to me like we ought to look at that little residential area.
Yeah, this is supposed to be the lighter...
That's what I would think too. It would change...
Because right now it's actually zoned, community commercial. And that's, that's what it's supposed to be. I think that's just an error. Thanks for catching that.
That would make sense. And then I think all the rest of that, because of the residential that's already there with Jesse...
Jesse's broken.
And all that stuff, would make sense to, to see that would be, I'm still not quite sure about the other residential there longer.
Residential too, so I don't...
Say again, Ron?
I could see it go residential too because you're up against the residential there too. I mean, I, I understand the commercial. I mean, I, I just think it'd go either way, but...
I just think for tax base, it might be a little bit...
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
It is an interesting piece because it's not very deep. So it's definitely a very specific footprint of commercial that would work there.
It seemed like we had an applicant a few years ago that came in that wanted something there. Or maybe I was in the audience when he brought it in. I can't remember.
Yeah, in the last, I can say confidently, in the last three years, we haven't had, and really any inquiries on this piece, which is, it might be the only piece that we haven't...
It was a few years ago.
The animal request to change from industrial to, to...
Where's the rodeo grounds?
Right here, that's where they wanted to do it.
A little bit.
That's gonna be the housing.
That's where they wanted to do it.
Just to the east of where the cursor is right now. That's a, that and then the whole thing with the gravel pit being able to have a shed or something like that. Those are the only two things I remember that.
Towards the rodeo grounds for that gravel pit. Well, there was an application towards the rodeo grounds for that gravel pit. That was further east of there, so.
Yeah, and then we had an application by the owner, Arizona Auto that owns, that bought LKQ to do, uh, of one of their facilities on that piece in between the rodeo grounds and our other piece. Uh, that didn't really progress, but they're very interested in the outcome of this project.
So does that mean the rodeo grounds are going to move?
We anticipate the rodeo grounds, I mean, it hasn't been a, uh, a formal decision, but all signs point to, uh, us not maintaining our property in that location.
Is that a city, is the rodeo part of the city?
The property is, yeah, the rodeo's not operated, it's operated by the riding club, but the property is city property. So the city, the rodeo and the old dump are both, uh, so these are all city properties, these three, as well as these properties over here. This big piece in the middle is the piece that's owned by Arizona Auto, our Pearson Properties, while the rest of ours are ours. So.
With, with the way it's outlined right now, would the auto, uh, the auto place be able to remain there?
It's able to remain under any scenario, because it's a illegal, non-conforming use, correct? Same with the storage units, the bus facility and the batch plant. We would hope that as this, uh, area changes and continues to develop, that the market forces would work, especially on the batch plant where they have a very, uh, low ratio of improvement value to land value, they're probably the, the first, I would anticipate, going at least under a standard redevelopment model. Cause once you cross over that line where your land's worth somewhat more than your improvements are, or the value of your operation, it makes sense to do something else with the land and, uh, there are, even though it does give them additional operational efficiency to now be right off of an interchange. Uh, but we anticipate the development around here and especially the development adjacent properties where they've been having, uh, different kinds of impacts over a number of years will be less and less tenable to them operationally. But the new storage units, the, uh, the auto area is, uh, again, another area where your ratio of improvements to land value is pretty low.
They've been there a long time now.
It's been there a long time. And then the bus barn's a difficult one, or the bus facility's a difficult one, because, uh, well, they don't particularly have any attachment to this site, they have an attachment to this area and there's just not property, they need a, logistically, an operational center in this north part of the district uh, for their operations, and there's just not many conveniently located pieces.
Did they buy that, I assume they bought the property, the district?
Oh, yes. Yeah. Did the mitigation, took it through, uh, but what will probably happen is there will not be, uh, another just random impact from the sixteen hundred south project. We won't have left turn movements in and out of that facility. So, we're gonna have to figure out how to quickly extend the signalized intersection that's gonna be stubbing here uh, on the east side of the Johnstons and then somehow connect through the minor property to get back into the bus yard.
You're not gonna have them come right off the street then?
No, because there's gonna be a median here.
So they can't. So they can't?
So they can't turn left out or in.
Why the thought behind the median?
To, uh, it's a couple things. Much, much more safe, more safe in terms of operations, where you can reduce left turn movements and right turn cross traffic movements. It increases the safety significantly.
Reason I ask is Fifth, Fifth West in Provo. Thirty years ago, they tore the medians out. Five years ago, they spent millions of dollars and put them back in. Same thing with University Avenue.
Right.
So.
Is this gonna be four lane?
It's a five lane facility.
Oh, it's a five lane.
But the majority of the fifth lane will be median except where it's needed for turning.
So have there been conversations with the district office about this?
Yes.
And, and moving it anywhere or?
Not, not beyond, hey, we could move it, but we need a piece of property that's equal in, you know, usability and location and convenience.
And does the city have any?
The city, no, I don't know that we have, have any, I mean, we have this piece over here, but it.
Same problem.
So just, yeah, as they, as they're looking for new places for new schools, that might be a consideration to think about how many acres they're getting.
Right, and they currently own these parcels, as you're aware, and want to obtain more property in that area. So it does have impacts to some of the businesses that are operating along the corridor.
How many acres is that bus facility, do we know?
It is thirteen point nine one, but a big chunk of, chunk of it's not usable.
Could it, could it go to Spanish Fork? I think it could, cause that's still part of Nevo, right?
Well, the other bus shop's in Payson, and so they really are passionate about having something.
North.
It would have to be on the north end of Spanish, but yes, maybe if it was on the north end of Spanish, cause it's nearly in Spanish Fork anyway.
I mean, if we could stay north of the Parkway, I think they'd probably be okay with that. Just based on my intuition and, uh, the conversations we've had with the district, but again.
It doesn't do them any good mileage wise for schools if they don't have it on the, the north end.
Especially with the logistics, well, the growth of Springville and Spanish as opposed to Payson.
Just, just for interest sake, do you know how many buses go to that elementary school behind the quad center every day?
I know that there's eighteen that go to Spring Canyon, but I don't know how many.
Seventeen that go to that elementary school, and junior, or middle school, I mean.
Oh, yeah, that's the middle school, yeah, seventeen go to, yeah.
Yeah, there might be eighteen this year, nineteen, it's a lot of buses in and out of that area.
Uh, that's what happens when you have four hundred south and the Tintic line that you can't, that stops your safe, uh, that stops your pedestrian area. So, yeah.
Slide that, slide that up just a little bit, no, the other way, I'm sorry, I always go up and down and set it down. Now, down a little bit more, or up, whichever way that is, no, the other way, the other way.
North or south?
Just gonna zoom out a little bit.
Do you wanna see?
I wanna put sixteen hundred south in the middle of the, in the middle of the thing, there you go, and then up like that looks really good. Okay, so, now you also mentioned that there is gonna, we're not that far away from extending, cause right now sixteen hundred south's gonna go up and it's gonna dead end.
Right at fifty one.
Past that, right at the T-bone and.
Correct.
And everything, so that's gonna be a real T-bone.
Yes.
And then, um, but eventually, it's going, the plan is for us to take that straight across.
Correct.
And hook back in to.
At sixteen hundred north.
To right there.
Correct.
So what would happen if we take that all the way across, let me just look at that just for a second here, if I look at that. That's gonna go right, yeah, keep, zoom in a little bit more.
Yeah, it's substantial impacts to that neighborhood.
So it's gonna impact, so that's gonna impact, this is Florence's. I can't, I can't move the mouse, I wanna move that mouse, but I can't move him. And so, yeah, keep going up, going up, going up. Right, okay, that's my old house.
That's Roos right there.
There's Roos.
That's Roos, that's my old house, this is, so these will probably go away, these are gonna go away, right?
That, we anticipate that if that is the chosen route, and it's the only one that makes sense now, now that the five lane road's being built to this point, that there will be some house takes here, yes.
Yeah, so there's gonna be some interesting, I don't know if that's Don Benson's house or.
Five or six houses.
I think a million years ago, but it's been, it's interesting, so I thought, I tried to follow that through the other day and I was wondering if that's where it was gonna be, so that makes sense.
Yep.
So it'd probably end up going out, well, there's the road that's going out by Florence's now, so it'd probably, we'd probably abandon, would we abandon that road?
I don't know how that would work, cause I know we'd need some degree of stacking, uh, off of eighty-nine before you got to your first intersection, so I would actually guess that maybe this road stays under the bridge and, uh, does, maybe acts, maybe, I don't know, but I don't think you're gonna have an intersection between sixteen hundred south and three fifty east, cause that's just too close to this intersection.
Very interesting.
But that's.
So they'd probably just go in and buy out those homes.
They would do an environmental study and determine what the footprint of the project would be and what properties they would need to, that would be impacted.
And try to work with homeowners, I guess it would be like any place, work with homeowners, if not, then you could always go eminent domain.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Which is pretty much your last resort, worst case scenario to use eminent domain.
It does provide, uh, I mean, for owner occupants, it doesn't provide much benefit, but for people that own them as income properties, it does provide some, uh, tax free exchange benefits by extending out your identification window for a ten thirty-one exchange. That's your random fact for the night, you get twice as much time to identify under a threat of eminent domain.
It is.
Okay. So we could expect some, um, medium density applications probably coming in for that property in the middle, our, uh.
Yeah, I think we could very quickly see.
That, that's what, that's what developers want the most.
Applications on the Pearson property and, uh, purchase offers for our property and then the, all the Crandall Farms property, which is all through here, well, not that one now.
So, that, that.
Is there, that's in, they already have a development partner, uh, that's been involved in our process here and is.
With that area, like, does it, I mean, just from the little blobs to actual parcels, would it go down to the, like, the, the bottom of the parcels where the auto or that the rodeo is at, is that the bottom line of, of the teal blob?
It's, it's close, uh, this road here is this road here. And so it's just a little, this crossroad comes somewhere in this area.
Oh, okay.
That's good, going back and forth like that.
Yeah.
So with all the planning that we're doing, are there any areas that were?
I'm having a good time tonight, this is kinda nice.
There's not anticipated in this plan to leave any of those areas actually in agriculture. Interestingly, the only cultivated areas in this whole, uh, project area are actually these areas up here which, uh, are leased by Harwards. Uh, everything else is, uh, range.
So they're gonna have to subdivide those parcels then, if it's gonna be three different kinds of zoning or?
It, the, with a regulating plan, it, when people come in to develop, we'll say, you know, what do you fall under? Cause none of those parcels will stay the way they are as people come in to develop.
But are, are we, are we gonna try to, to identify a zo, a new zone for this area?
That's.
Wasn't that what we talked about?
Yes, we're, one of the implementation plant, uh, processes is to come in and create a, an outline of a form-based code that uses these land use types and identif, and assigns them to the different colors essentially.
Yeah.
And they've included some of the character images of these different areas. The housing areas, your single family housing. I think it's interesting, they dropped a picture in here that is basically out of the, like, suburbanation book, which is disconnected cul-de-sac land.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, uh, all the way down to that mixed use category. So that will all be part of the deliverable of the plan. Uh, one thing we're paying, uh, special attention to is the character of the sixteen hundred south corridor, uh, to make sure that it's something pleasant and attractive, that it's not just UDOT standard five lane arterial that you might see in South Utah, I mean, South, uh, Salt Lake County or Northern Utah County. And these are some images from a five lane arterial in South Jordan that actually continues a hundred and six south uh, west of Bangater, but it turns into a local, uh, city street until it hits Mountain View Corridor, then it turns back into a UDOT facility. And this is a five lane road with large median, with, uh, roundabouts, with naturalized areas on both sides, and it actually even has single family house, uh, types fronting onto it with, uh, larger setbacks, a trail and a sidewalk, so it shows us that we have local precedence for making these types of large transportation facilities comfortable and attractive, not just big streets. So that's something we're really, uh, working on, these were just some precedent images showing, uh, the scale of different town centers. Uh, this image needs to go because we're just not gonna consider anything at that scale.
That's.
Uh, yeah, that's pretty, that's pretty bad, isn't it, parking on the first couple of levels with like.
Five, six.
Yeah. It kinda is like that one in Draper you drive by.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I did, it's kinda like that.
Uh, but these are some other images of, like, up here, you can see the before and after, this is the road you could have, but we're looking for something with better character, better design, uh, that balances the need to move vehicles quickly and efficiently, but still provide safe, separated facilities for active transportation.
But this is gonna be our road in the end, so.
We don't know.
Oh, we don't know.
That's.
We don't know who's gonna pay to, to upkeep all of that.
Right, we don't know who will take care of the road, we actually do know who won't take care of anything behind the curbs, and that's UDOT, cause they don't take care of anything behind the curbs on any of their roads, that's always our, uh, responsibility.
But the median.
Sometimes they do take care of the median.
Okay.
Really?
Can we avoid some of the design problems we have on four south, like four south and nine fifty where that, the left turn lanes aren't deep enough and they're not wide enough?
Yeah.
So you can't see, are we looking at that with this one?
Absolutely.
Great.
I, I don't, I'm not interested in having just another four hundred south, twelve blocks to the south.
Are we gonna be able to do anything with that, uh, with the, uh, with the power substation?
No.
It's gotta remain.
Yes, that is the interconnect substation between us and all of the, so that, the.
I assume we could, uh, block wallet or something, or put some nice concrete fencing around it or something?
Yeah, it would be at our cost, as, uh, I, it wouldn't, not something UDOT would do. And I, I would guess it's not something that the, uh, Utah Val, Southern Utah Valley Power System uh, would do, and we have a partial ownership stake in that as well. And the landscaping, there used to be more landscaping there than there was and it's gone.
Otherwise, it'll be a constant ISOR all the way through, so we probably oughta do something.
Uh, we, yeah, I mean, that's a really good, good question, uh.
Just a liability for traffic accidents going straight through the little chain link fence and taking out whatever's there.
Yeah, that.
It's a pretty substantial little piece, so.
It's, it's actually a very, it's our biggest substation.
Yeah.
And it, it's, that's where we get all of our power from Nevo into, into our system. At least as far as I know, the power guys are probably shaking their head, but I don't speak power.
You don't speak power?
No, I do not speak power. Yes, I, I, I speak what it does, but I don't know how it does it.
Well, I would, I would strongly recommend we do something that will pretty that up, we gotta pretty it up.
Just screen it, protect it.
Yeah. I mean, it's similar to the. No, you can't.
No. Trees.
There's a lot of examples of well-screened substation, I mean, there's a close one.
I'm just thinking off the top of my head, but, you know, Spanish Fork requires all subdivisions on those major streets to have concrete fencing.
Right, well, that's actually something we want to avoid, we don't wanna.
We don't want that, but I'm just saying if we want, there oughta be something that we could do that would, cause we don't have, I don't think we have to see it, do we?
No.
In order for it to work, or you don't speak a little power, so I don't know.
But that, I, that I can tell you pretty confidently. I mean, you're not gonna get, you're still gonna see the equipment, but. Provo did this around their interconnect, their substation.
Which one's that one?
That's on Freedom.
On Freedom. Where they used to have the power plant, now they just have their, uh, well, actually. Where they used to have the power plant, now they just have their, uh, well, actually, there is a power plant over here, a gas plant.
Yeah.
And it's not much, but it's a little bit enough to just.
Yeah. But even, we wa- we were pressing them to get us to our standard park strip and sidewalk here and just pushing it a little bit was so prohibitively expensive, it wasn't even an option. So they dressed it up as.
Yeah, cause that used to be, that used to be just wide open, didn't it?
Yes.
That solar farm in Spanish Fork.
Yes.
You really didn't know what it was. It's so high that you kinda have to go, is that really the solar?
That's also an example we point to of, uh, when we were talking about who's gonna maintain all these side areas, because even as nice as that looked when it was new, it, you can tell that it needs, it, even putting rock down in an ice pattern takes a lot of. With as much dirt as we have on our road, our big roads. Uh, this is the, kind of, an image of the more detailed transportation plan. This is just very conceptual from, from, uh, avenue, that we do have our large streets, but they will have a, a smaller interconnected grid of streets. And that there's, uh, lots of ways to get in and out, uh, in different directions to different signals, so that we can have better traffic distribution than we have on fourth. We will have a signal at Fourth West, a signal at nine fifty, a signal at twelfth, uh, and a signal at seventeen fifty. And as well, I think, maybe just a stop-controlled intersection like Seventh, Seventh, Seventh West on Fourth here, but there will be more signals and more intersections. So we should be able to disperse those trips on and off of the, those movements on and off of the facility better.
Those stop signs aren't on sixteen hundred, right? They're getting onto sixteen hundred from the.
Yes, yes, and I, and we, and as far as we've been told, these are actually signalized intersections.
Scared for a second.
When they meet warrants, so, uh, I, I don't believe that's entirely accurate. I know at least that these are intended to be signalized when they meet warrants. Uh, this is, uh, what the scenario planning looked like. You essentially chop everything up into little grid pieces and then let the computer uh, do its work after you've kind of painted the colors on. And this is the, essentially the color distribution or the use distribution of that preferred scenario. So you can see we've tightened up the amount of residential that's on the corridor, uh, with, uh, after guidance from the council.
They've got that section as residential, yeah.
But with a park.
It does have a park, yeah. The residential next, yeah, west of the park.
Yeah, there's, this is very draft form. We just wanted to take the chance to, uh, bring it up to speed since we really have been working pretty iteratively with the council on this. As they, uh, Mayor Packard is extremely interested in, uh, getting council input early and often. But your input and guidance is also very important to the process.
What kind of access does that housing area, is it like Kelvin Grove up in the?
Yeah, can we go back to the, the more.
Here?
Detailed kind of version of this?
Up left. Okay, so I have a road that goes through.
What, was your question here?
No, uh, if you're going up and left, so you're northwest of where your, your cursor is, just north of that. There you go, that area.
Yeah, that's.
Looks like they've got some good connectors.
Well, it, it does nothing changes. There, that's all existing. That's, uh, Camelot.
Yeah, that's where I was looking for.
Yeah, that's seventeen fifty. We do anticipate, and this is something we're, that is part of this realignment project that we're working on, is that nine hundred south will continue across. That's what our transportation plan says. So you'll actually be able to get across the rail between sixteen hundred and twelve, uh, between sixteenth and fourth, which you can't do now. So we're really.
At-grade crossing?
It is an at-grade crossing.
Signalize, of course. Or no? You know, arms.
Oh, absolutely, yes, absolutely, yeah. You can't have it any other way.
Yeah.
We.
Have that as multifamily housing, you'd have to have them access it from the side road, not, cause if you.
Right.
There's gonna be a median, you can't get.
We anticipate that most of the local access into and out of these properties will happen off of the perpendicular roads like it does on, generally on four south. There will probably be ride-in, ride-out accesses like you have in front of Smith's, but those would be limited by both, uh, just traffic engineering considerations and depending on whose road it ends up being, the access management policy.
Okay.
Are there any questions on this? We're, we reviewed this in council last week in work session and are giving them some time to digest and provide feedback and then going into, uh, get into deliverables and hopefully get something back to you uh, in September or October for kind of initial consideration of a final document.
Do we own that land right where your cursor is? Is that Springville or Spanish?
That's Spanish work.
Any chance we're gonna annex that just to have cohesive?
No.
No. Are they going to help us plan this so that what they put in there matches what?
We are collaborating their plan. They have an existing plan that's about two years old for this area. And we're primarily concerned that we have some compatibility, that we're allocating the right uses to the right places on a larger scale than just whether we want the retail on our side of the line or your side of the line. But unfortunately, it often falls to that.
What about that medium-density little square just to the west of that? That seems kind of separated from a lot.
It, it may be, uh, I mean, it's a, it's not a small area, but it's also because we, it used to be up here contiguous with this. But to address the council's concerns that we provide commercial along the corridor, we switched that for that. And so that, that's definitely flexible. That's the, the move we made quickly to address the council's concern about the amount of re- uh, residential on the corridor. Even though, even at this initial phase, uh, initial look, is pretty comparable actually to what we have on four south. We actually laid both plans on top of each other. It's quite similar. It's just this often feels, we forget the scale here, that we're going all the way from the freeway to Main Street, essentially.
Yeah.
And we often look at four south, the west part of four south, and the two chunks from seven hundred to the viaduct and then the viaduct to the freeway, forgetting that everything east of Seventh is all residential on four south.
Do you know what Spanish is planning right next to that little?
That little multi?
On that specific piece. Uh, residential.
Sort of a connect in with their.
Yeah.
So they're, they're planning residential on their part of the land, or onto the west of it, into the south.
Up here is, uh, it's kind of a flexible designation in their plan. It could be, uh, office, uh, it could be residential. It's likely, I, I believe that this area up in this peninsula is likely to be multifamily. Based on.
Would that be multifamily? If they did have multifamily there, then it wouldn't be all on its own, but. Well, it's good for Smiths and Walmart. To have more housing going in there. You've got some great connections to both, from twelve hundred west and.
Seventeen fifteen.
High fifteen and.
Nine fifty.
Yeah.
Well, there could be another little neighborhood market hole in there too, you never know.
Uh, the, uh.
I mean, that's what the light.
Developers of Canyon Creek have indicated that there is, there are still large format retailers out in the market looking for a place to land in this area, cause they, Canyon Creek's essentially full. And there's still a couple boxes that want a home in this trade area. So there is some potential for that.
Good job. Thanks.
May I differ? Active transportation?
Well, now that we talked about the incentive robbery, why not?
Yeah. Okay. So active transportation, what is it? How many, have you could, you have a clear, or what you feel is a clear idea in your head of what active transportation is, so I can kinda know my audience?
Oh.
Yes.
Karen, Genevieve.
Just wrote it right there, but.
Yes.
Liking, walking.
I know, but myself, yes, I know.
Walking, cycling, scootering, rollerblading, nobody does it anymore.
People are rollerblading.
It like picked up over the pandemic. Rollerblading, it was like a thing. You couldn't even buy a rollerblade.
Non-gas powered transportation.
Yes, uh, sometimes it's referred to as non-motorized transportation, but the, with the micro-mobility segment and the e-bike segment growing just exponentially.
Oh, I said gas-powered.
Yes.
E-bikes are okay?
E-bikes are okay, but mopeds, I guess not. Mopeds have gas, right? They're a little before my time, I think. I really want to frame our discussion of active transportation not in an either-or, or a this instead of that, or a one mode is better than other mode, but really that.
Protected bike lanes, wowza.
That's a sweet protected.
That is a sweet protected bike lane. That's nice.
I mean, this one's, that one's pretty nice. It's curb-protected.
Not as nice as the other one.
No, it's, it's not quite, it's not quite that.
There's no way that it get, well, I mean, not impossible. I'm not da- daring anyone to try to get over it, but. It's not likely.
I really wanna frame it as it's, it's a s- something that helps solve our mobility problems. It's not, uh, hey, cars are bad and everybody should be riding a bike. Or, hey, uh, this is only for, only benefits one group of people, but it really solves all of our problems. And a good active transportation network or system is like our roads. We don't just not connect a road in most cases, or drop off a lane in some places to say, ah, well, we don't need both lanes here, we can just deal with one lane. But, uh, our active transportation network is much less complete. So we're looking at it in a way so that we can get it like a road infrastructure we currently have that is, uh, well-connected and consistent across the city. It really gives everyone more options to get where they need to go quickly and safely by building this active transportation infrastructure into our transportation improvements, not viewing it as like a separate, uh, thing or some type of enhancement or, uh, uh, something other. I really like this statement that everyone rides easy when we have better infrastructure. It relieves congestions because we can have a completely connected and comfortable system for people that ride bikes and walk. And it allows, especially it allows people on bikes to travel safely without inconveniencing drivers and walkers, because there's clear understanding of how the system works. My wife has been hauling out to Saratoga Springs a couple times a week for some soccer training. And she said, there was finally a, a bike lane that made sense to me, cause it was solid. And then it turned into this dashed kind of broken spot, and I thought, oh, that's where I can cross it to get into the right turning lane. Whereas we live on Main Street and our bike lane is striped solid white lines all the way down, which means technically, you're not supposed to cross that. So she says to me, I'm supposed to turn out of the lane of traffic in front of Beto's into our street and not have a deceleration lane. So establishing a system that's consistent and is designed properly gives everyone, uh, more comfort and more, uh, safety on the road. Particularly, it provides everyone of the, or everyone that would like to, the confidence and ability to walk or ride to work, but also school to markets, to parks, to restaurants. We, I see so many people coming to the farmer's markets with their wagons and their strollers, and I wonder how many of those people live within a convenient walking distance, but don't walk because it's not convenient or it's not safe. I even, uh, especially last night, I was driving through and the rapid rectangular beacon is flashing out here. And people are trying to get across the road and it's dark and they're hauling a wagon behind them. It's definitely, there's an element that, uh, people don't feel it's entirely safe. And something I'll come to with an image later, that good active transportation infrastructure doesn't leave, you know, people on bikes or people in cars or people walking to navigate breaks in the system or incomplete connections. Where you come up to an intersection and all of a sudden the bike lane just disappears. You're like, what am I supposed to do? Those are really confusing. It forces everyone, the cars, the bicyclists into unsafe situations. Like on Center Street, I have, I have the picture of Center Street where people aren't quite sure what to do there. And so you end up in the, in the second to outside lane with your right turn signal on and somebody comes and turns right in front, you know. So all, all those elements, uh, help us, help, or at least point to me that it's really helps this kind of infrastructure properly designed and constructed thoughtfully helps everybody. And this is a great quote from the People for Bikes organization, that everyone has peace on the road when everyone has a piece of the road. Not to say that every road warrants completely separated facilities for different travel modes, but where it does, that that really helps everybody work together well. And again, everyone, all the users of the streets can get where they're going because everyone's needs are met. Uh, everyone has the type of facility that works best for them and provides them safe, safety. And if we can do it through good planning and planning ahead, it's something that doesn't have to be viewed as, uh, a new and additional burden on the city. So again, it relieves traffic congestion, increases mobility, and it makes our city more alive and livable. I feel that, uh, if my kids can get out and ride their bike to school or ride their bike to the market, even though there's, we used to have party line where we could get a, a piece of candy, but we don't now. I hear people lament, you know, I could walk to, uh, and now I can't even remember to the markets on, you know, one on Fourth East and Eighth South, or markets around the city where people could, you know, get stuff lo- close and ride their bikes, or often called the popsicle test. Can your little kids go get themselves a popsicle safely? And that's really what can help us. But obviously, there's concerns and questions, and a lot of the common questions are first, is anybody gonna use this? Uh, how can I justify, you know, spending money on something if only a small percentage of people are using it? Uh, but in all the research that's been done, especially in the last ten years, people have expressed a desire to bike more. Sixty-three percent of, uh, people, uh, have said that they would bike more if it felt safer in a wide, kind of a countrywide, uh, study. And that's borne out in our active transportation, uh, survey that we did last year at, at the beginning of the plan. And if it can become predictable and safe, people will then begin to use it. Next question, why should we be spending dollars when people won't be using it? And the answer to that, as we've discussed, is that it benefits everybody on the street, not just people on bikes. That it makes it less stressful for bikers, but also for drivers. And it provides us more opportunity for people to get where they need to go, have a more peaceful commute. It, uh, we really should avoid a conversation that's about us and them. In cities with a lot of different options, uh, people take different options that give them the most control based on how they wanna travel. And they open up opportunities for commuting, recreation, health, economic growth, all those elements that make it really vibrant city. And the budget question we've been talking a lot about internally is how do we make that argument when there's all kinds of things that are big priorities in a limited bucket of money? The real answer is to do it all together, and we'll get into this later when we talk about implementation, that when we do it together, we can accomplish, uh, a lot. We don't need to rip up our streets every time we need to make a change. And it's really inefficient to look at them as individual projects or things that don't work together. Because we repave our streets on a schedule. We chip seal them on a schedule. We do all those types of maintenance work. We build new streets. Developers build streets. There's a lot of ways to tackle this. The genesis of this plan is the council's request on my priority list when I started here to do a trail, to update the trails plan. And we looked at the trails plan, which was really just, the best we could find was a Photoshop file. Somebody had been coloring on to show where the trails were and decided that it didn't make sense just to have some trails that people drove to in their cars and got out and rode them and then drove away, but that we really needed an interconnected network of pedestrian and bicycle facilities for people to move out about the city. And this map, which is our existing facilities, really highlights that. The Devon Glen Trail is great. And last time I rode over there with my kids, we did like two laps because my son loves all the bumps from the roots. Yes, the tree roots and getting air off of those, especially as you're coming up right to the park. There's pretty, some pretty gnarly ones. But then we get over here and baby, you know, you bushwhack over to Seventeenth, or to sixteen hundred West and.
With a lot of mosquitoes.
Yes. Twelve, there's a little bit of twelve fifty, twelve hundred West trail in, there's some along Dry Creek. And you can drive up to the trailhead at seventeen hundred East and right up the canyon. But aside from some other small improvements, we really just don't have much of a system. And something to consider is that it really takes a system, individual pieces that are disconnected from each other really won't give us the results that we want to see. And this is the picture of Center Street that shows one of our, one of the existing conditions that is problematic. We restriped the east side of Center Street when we rebuilt that road two years ago and created a buffered bike lane. But once you get to the intersection, there's no guidance for what the bikes should do, for what the cars should do. There's no protection for the bikes in turning movements. And then once you cross the street, you're basically in giant pavement nowhere land.
And if you are there and there are not vehicles there, then you've got to get on the sidewalk and go over to be able to hit the walk signal to go back to get your spot.
There's no bike sensor in the signal. And what's interesting is that all of these Waytronics sensors you see here can be calibrated to detect the bicyclists. We don't need any extra equipment.
Oh, there you go.
You just say, hey, there, there's a lane there. And if somebody is there, if somebody shows up in this spot, they want to cross. So that's what's really nice about.
Even with the bike lane though, on Center Street from thirteen hundred East down, it's not a safe bike lane.
No, it's not.
We've got cars parking on the curb. You don't know if the guy's going to throw his door open when you're going twenty-eight miles an hour down the hill. You know, people, it's just not safe.
No, it's not safe. And this is, this area is marginally better because we do have the right of way and we were able to buffer it off of the parking and the lane. But I, I want to see the type of system. I was walking back from the WW Clyde House a couple of weeks ago when there were girls, maybe my six-year-old's age, running up and down the sidewalk trying to go round up all their friends. And I thought that's, I want to make it comfortable for, you know, somebody like my dad, who I don't know if I could get him on a bike again. But maybe he'd move faster if he was on a bike to my little kids, comfortable in moving around their neighborhoods that way. And we've got, we've got a ways to go. This is an example of a place where, this is kind of a Cadillac. You might look at this and think, well, that looks expensive. But it illustrates that we have the knowledge, we have the engineering support and the precedence out there across the country to make substantial improvements. And this really makes an intersection better for everybody. Another image showing that it's all a matter of choices is this great one from Australia. This kind of just yucky marginal street that they reconstructed and has, you know, brought comfort and multimodal access to the street. A lot of times people, when we talk about this, will say, well, we're not Denmark or we're not Sweden. We're not, you know, we're not Scandinavia. But fifty years ago, neither was Denmark. This is a picture of Denmark, I think in sixty-four, right before they changed this street in Copenhagen. And they had a kind of an epidemic of vehicle pedestrian fatalities and accidents that included a lot of children and a grassroots group of parents, primarily mothers, started advocating that they wanted a different transportation future for their cities. And made very intentional choices over the intervening fifty years to where you have this city. And it didn't just happen. And it hasn't always been that way. So it really illustrates to me that it is a matter of choice and the choice that Copenhagen made isn't necessarily the choice that we would make, but that if we have a desire for a different outcome, a different future than what we would get doing what we're doing right now, that it's very possible. The purpose of the plan is to reevaluate what we've got and to identify opportunities to make it better. And to make a plan and policies to shape the city in such a way as to ensure the creation of a bikeable and walkable city, which is a very strong mandate in the general plan, which is essentially my policy guidance from the city council tells me to go and do this. To, because the question might be, do we want a bikeable and walkable city? Well, our general plan tells us that we do want a walkable and bikeable city. A big question, if you build it, will they come? Again, our survey suggests that residents will walk and bike more if we make those improvements. Nationwide, it's in the sixties in terms of people who say they would walk and bike more. Across the country, increased facilities increases ridership. And again, a majority of people would use a bike if they felt it was safer. And almost seventy percent think their roads aren't safe enough for families to bike. I had my daughter show me that same ride a couple of weeks ago when we went to Devon Glen, how she gets home from West Side on her bike. And after we got to the east side of the railroad on Center Street and we're crossing four, crossing Center Street north on four hundred West. I said, how do you know if anybody's coming over the railroad tracks? Well, they can see me. I said, you're ten and you're small. Okay. But I was just up on top there, so I know if somebody's coming. So I, I kind of fall into that camp sometimes. This is from the bike, the League of American Bicycle is showing the percent mode change. So what mode changes, what, how you travel is your mode. If you're in a car, that's car mode. On a bike, it's bike mode. So these cities, and you'll say, oh, the first four are really big cities. And yes, the first four are really big cities. But Missoula is about twice as big as we are and is the one I really like because it counters the, well, we have winters, people won't ride here. Missoula also has winters and Boston and Chicago. So they have. True. Also a university town, which does, is a confounding variable. But there are also other university towns that have substantially less mode share, but it is, does have an impact. So this shows us these cities have all invested heavily in their infrastructure and have seen commensurate changes or increases in their bike mode share. The data gets really messed up when you start looking at twenty and twenty and twenty twenty-one because people didn't travel as much. So the shares all kind of dipped, but up till twenty nineteen, the data's really good. And this is what I talked about earlier, that we have to remember that every piece of the network's dependent on another piece. Just like people didn't drive very much on the section of nine fifty West, south of Smith's before it connected to Four South. It just kind of sat there. But once we start making those connections, there's definitely a tipping point where the, we start seeing a substantial shift in mode. The goals are pretty limited and pretty broad, that we need to make connections and that the network should work for all ages and all abilities. It should promote active living, increased economic vitality and improved air quality or environmental quality. The plan has descriptions of the intent behind each of those goals is under each of those headings in the plan. Our existing network, as you could see on that map, is pretty limited. Our bike lanes, which are just the striped lanes on the side of the street, like on nine hundred South, we have about five miles of those. We have a mile of buffered bike lanes and four miles of side paths and shared use paths. So those are separated from the street, either associated with the street or not, like with the Devon Glen Trail. But the Hubble Creek Trail would count as one of those side paths and shared use paths.
What about Bonneville? Is it natural? It's not?
It doesn't really, it occasionally clips the city, but as you can see this map, it is really not within the city. And in our area, it's not really improved. It's pretty informal.
It's gravel. You can't even.
It, it's a mountain bike or gravel bike only kind of facility.
So it's not included in our.
No, it's not included in that, in that tally. No.
Truly, the only trail we have is going out the windmills and that.
Yes, and it's not ours.
Yes, and it's not ours.
So our current travel trends, as I was mentioning, give a lot of ammunition to the sentiment that why would we do this if we're getting a percent and a half of our travel? But the best data we have is our commute to work because we track it through the American Community Survey. So every year people fill out a survey and indicate how they commute to work. But commuting to work trips are not a majority of the trips. We take the trips generated from my house. There's basically two work trips. I come and I go. My wife would tell you that there are many, many, many more trips, even though she'd probably call it work too, that aren't commutes to work. And so the, the available data we have doesn't pick a picture, a good picture, create a good picture of our overall act of transportation use. And anecdotally, I don't know how your experience has been. I've, in the past three years, I feel like I have just seen a astronomical increase on, in the number of people out on, especially on e-bikes all over the city. In my neighborhood, at parks, on major streets, on trails. So there's definitely across the state and across our region, a big increase in terms of bike and walk mode share.
I think it's important that, that driving alone even is seventy-seven percent of the trips. And for me, I mean, I bicycle too, but I don't as much because I don't feel very safe. But I drive and I don't want to hit those people, that half a percent that's out there. I'm very worried that I'm going to hit them.
Right.
And so making it more protected and safer for that half a percent is better for me in that seventy-seven percent because I don't have to worry that, you know, someone's going to be really close to the white line and do I have to scoot over? And is that gonna, is there going to be somebody in the other lane that's too close to me? And yeah, if I'm, if I'm turning, you know, like is, how do I make sure that I don't hit somebody that's, you know, on the side? So
Well, I.
It's a, it's a big difference to the people who are driving because I think that all of us don't want to hurt someone who is
Right.
riding a bike or walking or, you know, whatever other.
There's clear expectations for everybody. It's better. I think your, the train that you shared with your sister getting around your neighborhood shows kind of both sides of it, that it's benefits all the users.
Yeah.
Don't have a cyclist sharing a lane with you, riding in front of you and people getting impatient and trying to go around them or.
Yeah, which is dangerous for the cars and for the.
Yeah. Well, and then also it helps people who are on bicycles know what to do and know what not to do. So they don't just run through stop signs or whatever it may be that they, they also are acting safer because they're in a safer situation.
Or cars get, I know cars get upset with me because I kind of fall into the, the, there's categories of people, like people that aren't going to ride, interested but concerned, maybe like you, I'd like to ride more, but I don't, it's not great to, I'm pretty confident to like the Michael Nelson Road Warriors who are just like, I'm going to go ride twenty-five miles an hour and fine. So all becoming to work and say, oh, I need to go west or east on Center Street. And I'll got to figure out how I'm going to get across two lanes of traffic from the bike lane to the middle. And cars are like, why is this bike? Well, it's like, how am I supposed to get across the street? So there's a lot of examples of that. What's nice is this plan went through a whole process of identifying or using what we call streetlight data, which is a proprietary data source that uses anonymized cellphone data to show where people are moving. And it told us that seventeen point three percent of our commuting trips in the city are less than ten minutes. And that we have a ton of short trips, especially in the central area of the city, that are easily transformed into walking and biking trips if people could be more comfortable. And then we have major destinations that are really centrally located in downtown, along the four hundred South corridor and have good proximity to a lot of residential. We do have a lot of barriers. We have rail and highway corridors. We have Main Street. We have four hundred South. But we also have opportunities in our wide streets, in our waterways, in our rail to trail opportunities. And we still have a lot of current and future development that can, that we can make a difference if we come up with a plan and get it implemented. And this shows where a lot of those barriers are with the red lines and the opportunities with the yellow future development areas. There are a number of policy and program recommendations in the plan that first is that we need to go out and start doing a consistent system of bike and ped counts. So we can actually know what's going on. That we need better wayfinding for active modes. We need, we could consider a complete streets policy, which is essentially a policy that says we need to evaluate all users of a street when we're going through a redesign or a redo process. But also zoning and development codes like bike parking, parking reductions for bike facilities, bicycle amenities. We currently, you know, require some places to, or most developments to include a certain amount of parking, but the bike parking is very, very minimal. And also pedestrian amenities, how can we make it comfortable for people getting around the city that way? And then others like transit service and station improvements. Our service and our stops are really sad in Springville. And they've made some improvements in the stops over the past year, marginal, but some. And we're looking at short-term opportunities to reorient service in the city to provide some, some enhancements to that. The last, or a significant one in terms of other recommendations is that when we look at our transportation master plan, it's primarily based off what we call level of service, which is how much delay cars experience on the road. And that's really all it is. It's how much delay does a vehicle experience? But that we need to look at level of service for all the users of the core of streets. And that we could get more sensitive in terms of context and establish some streets that have mold of priorities. So say Seventh South from the junior high, I mean, from the middle school to the rec center could be more of a bike and walk priority street. Those are all things.
Three hundred West in Provo.
Like three hundred West in Provo or two hundred East in Provo. Now, on the implementation side, it's really daunting because what you're going to see when I pop up this map is essentially the equivalent of showing Aaron Johnson our street map from today. And he would look at that and say, how would we ever build that? But that's kind of what we're doing because we have very little now and we're planning, this plan looks out at a a really a finished network. What would a build out network look like? We've prioritized projects based on a number of criteria. And it really represents a long-term vision. The proposed network gets substantial, a substantial increase across all of our types, except for the bike lanes, which really aren't that great to begin with. So there's not a whole lot more of those, but bicycle boulevards, buffered bike lanes, separated bike ways, which is something we don't really actually have in the city or protected bike lanes. And then we have a significant amount of routes that need further study among some of our most important corridors like four hundred South and Main. The prioritization criteria were to connect existing resources, fill gaps in the network, helping people crossing barriers and providing separated spaces for people for walking and biking and connecting disadvantaged communities or people that aren't able to use, especially use a car so that they can access the transportation network in an equitable way. And then to improve safety and create placement and opportunities. Because when you create good streets that look nice, feel comfortable and people want to be on them, it really improves the, the value of the place and the economic and cultural productivity of those places. So this is our recommended network. For example, you can see that the Dry Creek Trail now connects all the way across to Spanish Forks Dry Creek Trail, which then comes up and connects out to the Utah Lake Perimeter Trail. which then comes up and connects out to the Utah Lake Perimeter Trail. The, uh, Cooney Road comes down and connects, uh, through to the Hubble Creek path, which will connect through into downtown. It's actually feasible that we may get this trail from Main Street out past Community Park as part of the flood mitigation project. Uh, which shows that if you have a plan, you sometimes can piggyback on some really big projects that you wouldn't have otherwise even be able to make any progress on. Uh, and then this, uh, black line here shows the, actually that's eighty-nine. We don't have a rail-to-trail on the, uh, Provo subdivision yet because that's still really new, but we'll get that on there. So it creates a connected network of on-street and off-street facilities so that you really can, uh, make your way around the city comfortably.
So Josh, it's more than just painting lines on a street.
It is.
So we're gonna have to widen streets and take away parking opportunities?
There are some places where on-street parking may have to be, uh, changed to accommodate a facility like they did on, uh, five hundred West in Provo to the south or on three hundred South in Provo between University and State Streets. Uh, those are kind of the best local examples. So there is some places where that, that may be required or to implement the facility that's recommended, that may be required, but generally these facilities are right-of-way constrained. And where they're not, it calls that out. So it means they're typically designed to fit within our existing right-of-ways, but there are some areas like Center Street, uh, from Center Street, I mean, from Main Street to sixteen hundred West where we don't have a full right-of-way yet and we would need to get that to make that facility continuous. But there's not a lot of wholesale widening of, uh, right corridors in this plan.
So this has taken it from the ten miles or so of roadway or trails we've got to almost a hundred.
Right.
So it's almost, you know, nine, ten times the amount. But again, we, can we, have we identified ones that we can just go and paint lines on?
Yes.
Because those are ones we could probably do quickly.
We've identified ones that we can go and paint lines on. We've identified ones that, uh, are coming with developments quickly or with road projects quickly, like twelve hundred West or the PL five fifty-six, the flood control, flood mitigation program. Uh, all of the Lakeside Landing area, we actually had Alta, this, our consultant, do, spend some additional money that MAG gave us for aftercare, even though we hadn't finished the plan yet. And analyzed Lakeside Landing and made recommendations. So all of the infrastructure in Lakeside Landing will be constructed with, as it comes with development. Same down in the sixteen hundred South in the Dry Creek area. So we're working on, uh, I am currently working on a table or a list that lines up all the projects with our road. Schedule our road maintenance and reconstruction and reconstruction schedules to see how much of those overlap and then without any essentially additional, uh, economic input, how far we could get just by following this plan and the work we're already planning to do.
I'm sure there's a huge fiscal impact as well, so have we determined what it would cost to implement this?
Take a look.
Oh, you, you do happen to have that, I see.
Handy day.
Well, ask and you shall receive.
Every project is priced out. It does not include a planning engineering or right-of-way acquisition where that's necessary. So these can be somewhat low on some of the projects, but it also assumes absolutely no synergy with any other project. So for all of the bike lane projects, it says you've gotta go paint new bike lanes independent of anything else you're doing. It doesn't say, hey, you're already restriping because you did an overlay. Uh, so there's a lot of, uh, synergy to be gained by analyzing the way this works with our existing, uh, planning. I've also broken it out here in terms of responsibility. Uh, in a simple look at it, about nineteen million falls into our ledger, which is a huge number. But we already have, the plan has this extensive section analyzing all the available funding opportunities. Something, a question we need to answer is what are the common, or what are we gonna expect in terms of maintenance and operations of these facilities once the capital costs are covered? Uh, the state has a, a program called the ATIP, which is the Active Transportation Improvement Plan instead of just the transportation improvement, which is how most of the roads are paid for. And they have lots of money that's not being allocated and we've already been approached a couple of times this year, hey, do you guys have projects? We'd like to get some money your way. And that requires a forty percent match on, on the city's part. So it's probable that, you know, if we did it over time, that nineteen million uh, could cost us the forty percent match and that forty percent match can come from anything that's not UDOT funds. From federal funds, from, uh, grant funds and other monies.
Just out of curiosity, and maybe Liz, you would know this, um, do we know how much we budget right now for this? Kind of stuff?
For active transportation? There's not a line item.
So if we don't, so right now there's not a line item. So we're going from zero to nineteen million.
But we do, we are, we do already budget for painting and striping roads. We already paint for repaving roads. So while it's not an aligned item, we do accomplish some of those elements. There's just no dedicated general fund line to this.
This point.
But we do have the new tax revenue that comes from the parks and arts.
We do have the par tax, which is anticipated to bring in close to seven hundred thousand dollars this year. Uh, that's many of these, uh, projects could be, uh, make a good case for. Yeah, uh, if you're gonna put in, uh, a bike lane on four hundred South, that's probably uh, a harder argument than we're gonna extend a trail or we're going to, uh, make, uh, an enhanced intersection downtown.
So there's- Again, my point is it's just, it's a rethinking
It is.
priorities. And I, and it's a city council task and it's gonna be, you know, a tough one, but because that's another nineteen million dollars that's-
Right.
And maybe twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty years.
Right. But we, a lot of those, there's-
A million dollars a year though, maybe.
Like the, the Hubble Creek plan, uh, the Hubble Creek Trail, uh, from Main Street West is like a three and a half million dollar project in here. And we're very likely to get that as part of the flood mitigation program because we have a plan. Uh, so there's a lot of, there's a lot more work we need to do to identify and provide confidence both to the council and internally administration and other directors that we're not creating a giant unfunded policy mandate that then
Exactly.
forces them to compromise their le- level of service delivery in other areas.
Josh, we, we also, as we work in various development areas, are we able to utilize some of them to provide as part of their amenities?
Oh, absolutely. Whenever- Like I said, with Lakeside or, uh, like Westfield Central is, you know, building a side path, uh, Dry Creek. All of those asphalt side paths in Spanish Fork are almost all done by development. So the fact that we haven't had this plan in place for, throughout the, basically the whole Westfields era for twenty years, we could have had a lot more infrastructure and connectivity in that area than we do if we would have had a, a better plan. And so development will pay a lot of the way, but that is why I broke that out, that development is, you know, nine and a half million of that
Exactly.
Of the thirty-five, not of the nineteen.
Right.
The, some really key takeaways from the, uh, the League of American Bicyclists case studies that they did on those five cities I showed you earlier, is that you'd need a plan that really with, that no city successfully developed a network without a plan. And that most cities have multiple plans, but not all facilities that have been built had been included in all the plans. And that utilizing repaving is critical, like we've talked about, that repaving's usually done like a ten to twenty-year cycle. And that's based on our established service level for pavement quality. And when we can, uh, use that equitably, and we really do, we don't just repave because somebody complains that their street's bad. And mo- none of our streets get bad enough that there's really that issue, except you can hear the cries of joy for people on four southeast of the roundabout. Uh, that we can really, uh, make critical progress with, uh, the repaving program. Also, like, uh, Kay mentioned, cultural change is typical, that there's clarifying our goals and changes in, uh, you know, public sentiment and politics often provide, uh, catalyst for these changes being made. Uh, and, but jumping to the end one, the, the reason is really important. It's like I said, we, uh, Denmark has made decisions that have made them what they are in terms of transportation and built form. But whatever decision we need, that we're gonna make, we need to make sure that it's specific to our needs and our residents. That it's the, the reason is right. Because if the reason's right, uh, it will uh, set a collaborative tone for our conversations and our engagements among citizens, staff, elected officials, and really, uh, help us understand what's important to us and prioritize those improvements based on that. So for funding, we're working on a budget-constrained priority list, essentially coming up with what we think may be a number we think we can deal with on a per-year basis and what could we do with that over a certain time horizon. And we've already finished breaking them out by responsible party and figuring out that there's probably nineteen million dollars in our ledger. Uh, the key questions I have for you is, do you feel like we, with the goals, with the network recommendations in this, you know, brief amount of time you've been exposed to them, like, it sounds like something that is relatable or, uh, relevant to Springville? Has the consultant and has our, our active transportation committee and staff done a good job of responding or being sensitive and making us, uh, a plan that seems like Springville? As much as you can speak to that? Or are there things in it that you think are uh, no-goes or, uh, really key points of concern that you think we need to address as we continue to refine the plan?
Um, we talk, you talked about Spanish Fork and connecting Spanish Fork. Do we know what Provo's plans are? And taking that into account?
Yes.
Provo's actually going to begin widening, or the proposal is to widen two hundred Freedom Boulevard, basically. For safer bike lanes. And they're ta- they're actually gonna take about fifteen feet of property away from some of the the, uh, property owners as you're going down Freedom Boulevard to make it safer. Because right now there's a bike lane halfway on it.
That's not great. Yeah. If we could just tighten the lanes up, we could buy a lot less property, but.
With the UDOT, you know, having Main Street being UDOT, like how much latitude do we have on doing things along Main Street and up to Ironton and?
We can't do anything unilaterally, obviously, uh, but UDOT is a partner in our reframing downtown project. They're a partner uh, with us across all of the, our transportation programs. They are very interested in accommodating and enhancing multimodal transportation, not just they've moved or are trying to move beyond, uh, their former paradigm of more cars faster to how can we help you create the community you want to create? And that's increasingly filtering down to local region staff from kind of the top-level administration. And, uh, at our first kind of stakeholder meetings for the reframing downtown plan, Eric Grasband, who is our region planner here, so he's basically over all of the planning for the county and other counties, uh, walked out, walked back in and said, there's a lot of room out there. I think we could do separated bike lanes. To which I thought back to, you know, concerned emails I had gotten previously about changing things out there. But once he got here and walked out and thought about it a little bit, it, he was very excited. Oh, you guys need to apply for funding right now and, you know, we wanna give you some money and the state's, you know, state has money. And it's like, well, let it through the plan. Let's make some, you know, well-reasoned decisions, but it was very uh, positive to, to me to have him, who's in a kind of a gatekeeper role, be excited and positive about those things. And UDOT did the, those bike lanes of their own accord. I mean, there's a lot of areas that they need to be improved and they're not entirely installed according to like best practices, but it's something. And so we, there's definitely a shift.
I think you're headed on the right path, but I would look at accessibility and safety is probably two greatest things. I mean, to come out here and put a bike lane out here, parents aren't gonna turn their kids loose on a bike lane out here. So very few people are gonna get the use of
Right.
bike lanes here. But I think within the city on smaller, you know, in, within the smaller streets and side streets, if we have, you know, like two hundred East in Provo, that type of thing to allow where parents are comfortable to go on a bike ride with their kids or to walk down the street and don't have the fear of, you know, being hit or whatever. I think that bodes more towards what we probably as a city would like to have. Instead of putting a lot of money on a very busy road that very few people are gonna use. That's just my, my thought.
It's about connectivity.
Yeah.
That they have some connection. You can go over to Spanish Fork and you can take your bike out and you can ride a mile, and then you ride a mile back. Like, they did, they sometimes just don't connect.
Right.
And I would like to see connectivity if, if we're gonna put that kind of, you know, funds toward it and and I think it's a great project. I think people will bike, but I like them to lead somewhere.
Right. And where we have these plans and we already know kind of where we want things to go as we're getting closer to doing projects, working with businesses along those roads and saying, we need you to put in the bike racks before we have the trails, but we can use it. I mean, otherwise you're right on the trail and you say, well, we can't stop because there's
Right.
there's nowhere to leave our bike.
Speaking, speaking of which, the the rec center down there has about
Four.
Four bike racks. I think you can put a bike on either side though, so maybe eight. But I was down there the other day and rode my bike down there. And I couldn't even get in there. There were thirty bikes and they were, the guy, the kids that had ridden their bikes down there just threw them in and
In the piles, yeah.
We're probably out of them.
You know, it was, it was just a joke.
End of like liking everybody's bikes to each other and hoping that-
But that also tells us something. There's a lot of bikes out, there's bikes.
Oh, yeah.
Look at Orem and, and that Murdoch Canal project that you can ride from, you know, Eighth North and Orem and feel very safe all the way to Lehigh and then, well, it's now on to you can almost go to Leighton all the way from there.
Yeah.
Um, if we have some way to connect on a very safe way out to Utah Lake.
Right.
Catch that trail where people can ride. I think that becomes, like, if you build that, people are gonna use it.
Yeah.
And that's what the city is lacking. I mean, I rode my bike today from here up to the BYU Stadium and back. My wife doesn't like me to do it, but it's, it's on roads. I mean, it's, you know, Cooney Road and
Yeah.
you know, wind around Knight South in Provo then, you know, and it's not probably the safest way, but, you know.
It's better than going over the hill.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so there's, you know, we don't have that infrastructure that we need to do things like that.
Right.
I think that a lot more people would really enjoy it and use it.
Yeah, if we built it right, you could even do a road race every year, canyon to canyon. Hubble Creek to Provo.
Or Spanish to Provo.
Yeah.
Maybe just a piggyback, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say that we also, I think, need to think about enforcement. I don't know if that's the right way to say it. But like, right now, we have bike lanes, uh, and and in, on my block, there's a bike lane on Second, um, East that people every, almost every day park diagonally there and are parked into the bike lane.
Or garbage day.
Yeah, garbage day too. Yeah, you know, so the bike lanes are completely ignored. And, and so I, I've watched people routinely go on bikes and have to go into the street because of cars parked into the bike lane and, but we don't have any kind of enforcement going out and ticketing those people or, or- And but we don't have any kind of enforcement going out and ticketing those people or or anything to educate to them not to do that or anything like that. And I think that's an important component too, cause we can make all these great bike lanes that don't serve the purpose because they're not being respected by people, other people on the road.
There might be a way to maybe include, I'm sure Mayor Packard always wonders what he could put in his monthly newsletter. But there might could be some little sections in there for, once things get really rolling, where you could help educate people with those things. I don't know, there just might be some things that you can, that just might be a thing to think about. I was also, maybe just to piggyback on some of the other comments that have been made. Maybe Josh, and and with your asking for some suggestions, um uh maybe, and I'll, I must confess, I did not read the entire uh book all the way through before I got here, but I did cruise, peruse through it quite quite a bit, but so it might be in there. But I'm wondering if if maybe what we could do is look at, and maybe the plan could include a as a prioritized strategy that would that would say, really what we should do is look at this first and then look at this next and this next and this next. I don't know if that was in there or not, but maybe something like that would be good. So we could look at connecting between us and Provo and between us and the lake, that we can look at the at the connectivity that Ann was talking about. So that maybe those would be our priority. So when we have whatever funding we have available, if we get seven hundred thousand from one source, we can maybe apply it to to do connectivity. And maybe that's our number one priority. Or then our next priority is gonna be connecting us with Spanish. And the next one is connecting us with Utah Lake and or whatever it might be. But if we had a priority uh as part of the plan, I think that would help give us, give more direction rather than, I mean, I see lines everywhere on that map. I mean, I I it's overwhelming.
Right.
When you look at it and think, how are we ever gonna get there? But if we prioritize and say, you know, let's try to get, let's connect ourselves. That to me would seem like maybe the number one thing is let's get ourselves connected for our city. And then let's get ourselves then looking out but into the other areas, but just thinking that loud.
That's in the plan.
Well, I but but it might be nice to have a a map that kind of shows these, this is the five year, this is the ten year.
That's why I asked it first. I just gotta tell you.
You know, like overlays, so you can see that this is what we wanna do first.
There, I mean, so there is the top fifty prioritized projects and then these are the prioritization criteria. My question would be
Connecting to community resources.
Hopefully, I think we've got good prioritization criteria, criteria.
Well, somewhere, didn't I see us, you're gonna study some of them out, right? Like you're all of them out? Because the I can tell you already, there's some neighborhoods that are, would be like, no, don't put it there.
Right. I mean, every project, we have to go through the process of planning and design uh and not make the mistakes. There was actually one in San Diego recently where they came in and put advisory lanes in, which is this new type where you put a bike lane on each side and one car lane in the middle. And if another car's coming, you make sure no one's in the bike lane and you scoot over to let people by. And this is a pretty reasonably high traffic street, but still residential, but they didn't tell anybody. They just did it.
What neighborhood in San Diego do you know?
Well, I can't remember off the top of my head now, but I actually have a a mission friend uh that is a YouTube person. He's a road guy Rob. And he actually did a spring one about wide roads and he is driving in a circle on two hundred west, saying like, this must be the widest residential road in the United States. But he did us us a a video story on that. And yeah, they just absolutely blew it because they didn't do any outreach. And they put this thing out on the ground. And now I'm sure everyone is just soured against any change for probably a good amount of time. So we need to make sure, you know, we're not going in up up on fourteen hundred east or something and people wake up and there's bulb outs and no parking signs.
Josh, have you have you had talks with the railroads about, you know, the uh especially the Hubble Creek Trail going all the way down? Because you're crossing railroads twice there.
Yeah, so.
One of them right now, you know, the railroads came in and put a, the little kids, the little kids were using that trail to go down to West Side School. And they came in and they put a fence across there right down into the creek to prohibit the kids from going there. And now we can't even cross over into that that trail.
Yeah. Uh we have not had specific conversations with Union Pacific on that. But our, the flood mitigation pro program has, and that the forty percent engineering drawings on that, so kind of the pulmonary engineering actually has a grade separated tunnel under fourth west for the trail. So the trail would run from like Snellson's Photography on a side path next to the river, cause they would deepen the channel, but narrow it up and basically make it a concrete engineered channel and then put a trail on the side of it. And then that trail would dip down and go under fourth west and then come back up into Devon Glen and head all the way out. And then once we get to sixteen hundred west, we gotta figure out what to do.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea.
The one here is by far the bigger problem, cause we just didn't know how else to do it. And that coming in and saying, yeah, we'll put that in as part of the project was like.
When you go on that Murdoch Canal Trail, you know, they have several uh underpasses that they've put on with the, where there's high traffic roads. Very effective.
Except for a guy just was killed there a couple of weeks ago in the heaven accident, because you go into those tunnels and it's dark.
You gotta make sure the geometry is good, that the turns aren't sharp.
His helmet on, the other guy didn't.
Oh, he crashed and Oh. Yeah, that's tragic.
On Murdoch Trail.
Oh, Murdoch.
He's blind, eagle blind in that dark tunnel.
Right. But insane with some of the Provo River trails.
Yeah, it's like eight hundred north.
There's not a way to light those?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes you're constrained by what you, but on this one, it's gonna be really nice because it's gonna be all new, a new box, uh a new culvert, new ramps. So we can control the geometry and uh make sure it's done right. And with a plan like this, it gives us the standards for that is is really helpful.
This is the greatest plan I've never read.
Oh. I hope.
I'm sorry, I have read a lot. I have read a lot of it, but I love this graphic you just put on, see, cause that shows the, that's just exactly what I was thinking. Just exactly what I was thinking. So that that makes sense.
Those yellow lines
Yeah, that makes sense.
line up with kind of what you thought might come out of it?
Exactly.
But timeframe, you know, like for, do we have anything in here that like kind of says like, oh, putting the separated bikeway on Main Street is a two year project?
No, this isn't segmented into time horizons yet. That's almost a next step as we move towards implementation. But it's something we're definitely looking at, especially as I go and take the transportation, the capital plans, the five year plans. And say, when each road is gonna be redone and then lining up these projects with that and see how many we can handle that way. And then as we can develop a model for how much revenue we may be able to anticipate on an assistant basis, then we can make a revenue constrained priority list over a certain time horizon. So those are things we're working on.
And there were some projects that were like longing for it that we thought would be fairly close in the timeline.
Right. And then there's some like Hubble Creek tree, Hubble Creek Trail east of Main Street that are, somebody needs to pay a lot of attention for fifty years to get that done. But Murdoch Canal Trail took thirty, so.
I know exactly.
Things are worth.
Yeah. And you gotta have a plan.
I kind of wonder what we can do even when partner with public safety and whatnot to try and work on changing some of the culture that we already have. I mean, there are other places that I go visit where I go off or run or walk or whatever. And I feel more safe because I know that when I step up to the curb at a crosswalk and indicate that I'm gonna, I would like to cross, the cars voluntarily stop.
Yeah.
You know, whereas here it's it's more like the car mentality is that anybody and anything that slows me down or gets in my way of doing what I want to is an impediment to my life. And you see a lot of near misses with people that are already in the crosswalk. And you know, I wonder what we can do as we're getting ready to start on a major project like this to try and start changing some of that mentality just within our own community to be more aware and more respectful and more concerned about the safety of others.
Well, I think it started, I just think we need to do a little better job. They put um up on thirteen hundred east, they put a flashing light where the kids cross to go down to the high school.
I love it.
And people are starting to respect that and starting to stop. Now you'll get the occasional guy that, you know,
Is it better than this one?
twelve inches and he's gonna, two, twelve feet and he's gonna run right through and prove a point.
I think that uh as as we implement a plan like this, the the police force is gonna get online, I mean, get in in into the the idea that they need to do do more enforcement. Right now, you know, what's what's the incentive?
And what's there to enforce?
Yeah, what's there to enforce? I mean, there's the one right there on Center Street that if you pull up to there and you're supposed to be turning right in that or straight in that lane, they they go right past you on the on the right side and make a right turn. Nobody's enforcing that. But if it were enforced, I think, uh you know, people would get the get the concept.
And
It would take a very little effort to to change that.
And this is important, especially in that situation, a couple of years ago, Public Works was saying, we probably need to widen that out and get rid of the park strip and build a lane over the creek. But is is that the paradigm or should we?
Well, in yeah, in the reality, it isn't safe. And it's like you were saying, if you're going in, you don't know if a car parked there is gonna flip its door open or or what. I mean, those are not the safest bike paths. So my hope would be fix that.
Right. So yeah, there's always the tension between the different combinations we make.
I know Provo's done a few um crosswalk awareness and I don't know what the long term success with that has been versus just short term awareness, but that might be something we can look at.
Was that the thing by the rec center on, what is that, five hundred?
Oh, they put that median in after there was a pedestrian fatality there and they put that.
Is that temporary or?
No, that's permanent. Well, they did a temporary
Very.
paint installation there before they redid the road. But then they came in and put in a median with flashing beacons and a refuge. So you can actually have somewhere to stop in the middle of the road.
And bulb outs?
Yes, yes.
They did that a lot. But before that, to kind of create awareness, they, it was painted all
They did a a temporary project
Yeah.
all along three hundred west there.
But I think that that's, but that's one of those things that you can use to help train people, you know, before we make these big, you know, massive improvements. Those kind of things to kind of get people's attention.
Yeah, that's a, I'd like to uh in the future, maybe share a video with you from People for Bikes that talks about the kind of the rapid build paradigm where you go out and just prototype something. You don't wait two years to do the engineering studies and find money to move curbs. You just go out and stick some posts down and paint it, paint some lines and see if it works.
Yeah.
Without putting people in unsafe situations. But and then like Times Square, when they first uh changed Times Square, they basically just put up some barriers and threw some chairs out there and said, go for it. And after the, you know, after a decade of that working pretty well, ah, well, then they, you know, have incrementally improved it and made it permanent and high quality. But that's something that their transportation commissioner really pushed is doing small projects quickly uh just to see if it works. And then once we've got something that's just even kind of an ad hoc temporary thing, then we can improve it and make it more permanent. But if we just go out and try to, you know, do a lot of stuff quickly and inexpensively that we can make some progress, and they made a ton of progress. They would just paint, tighten up intersections with paint and put some pots out and put some chairs out there and make it a plaza. And then they'd come back years later and actually make it a plaza. So those are some of the strategies we can, we can pursue.
Something if UDOT would let us do with this, with this crosswalk here, some painting and and that kind of a a thing to create awareness for it.
Actually working on that. The as one of the deliverables in this plan was a pilot, a temporary project or a tactical project, which is just coming in and doing something temporarily. And it was basically to take us from Main Street to two hundred east. Cause we're planning on closing the north leg, the westbound leg of one hundred south in between one hundred east and two hundred east there. And so that would be a pedestrian only way and then putting temporary bulb outs and lanes between the one hundred west and Main Street and then doing temporary bulb outs on Main Street. Kind of hopefully before the parking, before the farmer's market ends or at the beginning of the season next year to do something temporary there to see if it could work. So that's that's something we we actually have a design for as part of this project. But we wanted to advance it a little further before we just went out and threw something on the street that people weren't expecting and then get everybody in a fuss and make it hard to get the plan implemented.
I like it. Sounds good.
Well, it's nine. Do you like it or are you done? That's, or is it a little combination of both?
All above.
Yes.
I think you gotta get started.
No, I
And I appreciate your feedback. It's very helpful.
What's the next step?
The next step is continued internal refinement to, so that all the departments and administration are on the same page before we advance it. Because uh Mayor Packard has really conveyed to us that he wants especially big initiatives like this to come with essentially unanimity from staff and not have, uh we always pick on Public Works, but we do it when they're there too. So uh not have uh Public Works come and say, well, I don't wanna do this after it's been implemented. And it's, well, that's what you've been told to do. Well, it's expensive or we don't wanna do it or we don't like it. The mayor wants us to have those questions answered and get everybody comfortable before we bring it forward. So there's more work than we initially anticipated internally before we advance it. But there is a uh study, a work meeting presentation to the council next week on this. And I'm gonna have to work and see what the important things to address in a half an hour are. But then we'll go back to staff and refine, make some edits based on staff input and based on, you know, your feedback and council feedback and see if we can't get the plan to a point where we feel comfortable that it's gonna be something we can do and not just something that sits on a shelf and disappoints people.
Sounds good. I think we've had feedback from everybody.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm glad we had a night where we could spend some time discussing these items.
Yeah, this has been a good, good session.
Good work session.
Yeah. Okay, uh going forward, do we have applications for next time or do you see anything on the horizon for next time?
We hold on.
We do.
Carla's
Ever.
Carla's about done with my project management software.
She looks very dubious.
So
Please look up on the actual computer, where is this?
We have uh for August twenty third, we have a development agreement. For September thirteenth, we have uh updates to the Modern Income Housing Plan. But yeah, it's a collaborative effort. And uh there are additional development or consent kind of, but those are the two legislative items that'll be uh coming to you. I'm not sure. We'll know more about that on Thursday, but they're coming to the uh, yeah, do a pop up at the uh event at the farmer's market on the twenty second. So it'd be great if you're available, if you could all stop by. Uh but we may, we're having our coordination meeting with them on Thursday. Uh and we'll uh determine whether there's additional opportunities for check-ins with council or with planning commission on that project.
Sounds good. All right. Anything further before we adjourn?
Not for me.
Okay. Anybody else?
I move to close the meeting.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Josh. Those were informative.
You're welcome. Oh, yes.
Oh, homework reading.